Okay, guys, that's up. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this city council meeting to order. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Gottel.
Here.
Councilmember Sandal.
Here.
Fitz Henry.
Here.
Rogie.
Here.
And Elliott.
Here.
Councilmember Elliott, that other second mic might be on and mine was doing the same thing if you turn that off. I think that helps. We have no one for the open forum this evening, but I do have a matter not on the agenda. This is, we received a copy of something from, an email from the city, to the city council, HRA and planning commission via email from the following person, Barry LeBlanc at 7521 Pillsbury Avenue, and the topic was the Met Council Housing Analysis. This was on May 13th, 2012, and this just is being read in for the record. So, seeing no other things in, I'd ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd ask the council for approval of the minutes of the special city council work session of May 8th, 2012, and the regular city council meeting of May 8th, 2012.
Bubu.
Second, discussion. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Presentations. Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a fun one. We're going to have a presentation tonight where we're going to do the swearing-in of the police canine units. We'll have Chief Sandell introduce them and, I thought, the dogs here tonight, too?
Yes, they are.
Just want to know.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, it's with great pleasure tonight I want to introduce you to our two newest members to the Richfield Police Department. Unlike our swearing-in two weeks ago, these new members walk on four legs and are rewarded for their hard work with their favorite tennis ball. The department's been operating with canines for about the past year, and the canines have proved to be a valuable asset to the department. They're trained in tracking, criminal apprehension, narcotic detection. Both these new canines are just completing this week their 12 weeks of very intense training at the St. Paul Police Canine Academy. So, I'm very excited tonight to introduce to you the two newest members of the department, and I'll have them bring them up. First, we have Officer Nate Kinsey and his new partner Rocky. Officer Kinsey is a six-year veteran of the police department, and Rocky is a 65-pound German shepherd who is nearly a year old.
Beautiful.
Rocky was imported from the Czech Republic. Tonight Nate has his parents sitting here in the audience with him to celebrate this swearing-in occasion. Next to Nate, we have Officer Brian Bataglia and his new partner Bodhi. Officer Bataglia is a four-year veteran of the police department, and Bodhi is a 60-pound German shepherd who is also nearly a year old, and Bodhi was imported from Slovakia. Brian has his wife and his parents present in the audience tonight. Starting next week, you're going to start seeing both Rocky and Bodhi on the streets of Richfield as they start in their service to the citizens of Richfield. Now, as is custom with the police department, we'd like to have Officers Kinsey and Bataglia take the oath of office for their new partners. Do they have to bark? Are you going to stay over here? If you guys want to just come over here a little bit? There you go. That's good. Thank you. Okay, could you raise your right hand? I state your name.
I, Nate Kinsey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the constitutions and the laws of the United States.
Support the constitution and the laws of the United States.
The state of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
The charter and ordinances.
Charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Richfield.
City of Richfield.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties devolving upon me.
Duties devolving upon me.
As a canine officer for the city of Richfield.
As a canine officer for the city of Richfield.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations. Now, we would like to present both Bodhi and Rocky their official department badges. If they want to, if Rocky wants to put them on. Nice job.
I must have picked up the mayor's.
Oh, here we found it. Oh, where was it?
It was on the desk.
Oh, it wasn't. Okay, thanks. So, I have a quick question before you guys take off. Why are those dogs coming from the Slavic countries? That's an interesting.
That's a very good question, Mayor. They have breeders over there that breed these dogs specially for this type of activity. St. Paul Police, when you go to their Canine Academy, requires you to acquire their dogs through their vendor who imports them from the European countries.
Wow, that's amazing.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, any other questions?
Yeah, I have maybe a couple. First one is, how many years will a German shepherd be able to stay as a police dog before they're retired?
That's another good question. We anticipate the service life of a German shepherd to be seven to nine years. They can have, our last German shepherd, we needed to retire early because of hip problems. They are prone to that, but the average is seven to nine years.
Hip dysplasia?
Yeah, yes, sir.
And the other question, when they take the dogs home, if they have children in the family, they have to be acclimated to children, too? I mean, they don't take their work home with them, right?
No, they're family dogs. They're very friendly dogs. They're well, they're very well-trained. 12 weeks of probably the most intense training you can imagine. Officer Kinsey has children at home, Officer Bataglia does not yet, but no, he has a wife, and no, they acclimate very fine to the family, so.
All right, thanks for the information.
Yeah, this is wonderful. This is great. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for bringing them in. Yeah, I know, we all love them. Look at all the people came. You just came for the dogs. I know, it's okay. I would, too. They are so cool. We know where we rate. It's all right.
Oh, we need now as a pony, we'd have the whole thing.
You really don't, you really want to stay for the financial piece here. We really, I'm sure. I know, I'm sorry, you're a showstopper.
The audit report.
Yes, so the presentation and receipt of the city of Richfield comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2011. All right, give us the movie version.
Well, Mayor, members of the council, Bill Lauer with the city's auditors, MMKR is here to give a brief presentation on the 2011 audit, and I'll let Bill take over.
Thank you very much, Mayor, council. Thank you for making time on your agenda for me this evening. You should have received in your packets a number of documents, the primary one being the city's comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended December 31, 2011. You also received, under our maroon covers, packets of special purpose audit reports and management report that we issued in relation to our audit. I'm going to be going through primarily the information that's in that management report. That's our executive summary, and I will be going through that with some of the tables and slides that are included in that report. One of the first things I need to do is remind you as the body in charge of governance of the city, what our responsibility is as auditor and how that differs from that of city management. That primary document, the comprehensive annual financial report, responsibility for the data and the disclosures in that document rest with the city management. Our role is to come out and perform our audit process and provide the opinion that goes in the front of that document as to whether it fairly presents the city's financial position and results for the year under audit. In addition to that, because the city earned more than half a million dollars in federal awards again this year, you had a separate single audit of those federal awards expenditures. And as part of both of these processes, we test internal controls and compliance on the financial statement audit level, on the federal single audit level, and the city is also subject to an audit of compliance with Minnesota laws and regulations. As far as the results, happy to say once again we were able to provide a clean opinion, without exception, on the city's basic financial statements, the highest opinion that we can give. We also were able to give a clean opinion on the federal single audit schedule of federal awards expenditures. As far as the special purpose reports, the internal control and compliance reports that were issued along with that audit, we had no findings on the financial statement audit or the federal single audit. We did have one finding this year on the Minnesota legal compliance audit. One of the expenditures that we selected for testing was essentially a social service grant to a nonprofit organization, and you have to have specific statutory or city charter authority to make expenditures, and that authority doesn't exist to make essentially a grant like that or a contribution to a nonprofit organization in the state statute. So, that was something that we had to cite you for as not being a public purpose expenditure. And then, one other packet that you received in your documents this year was a reissued special purpose reports for your 2010 fiscal year audit. There was a major federal program that was not included in that single audit last year with program expenditures of about $748,000. That program had to be audited as an additional major program, and those reports had to be reissued. Now, this happened because your finance department was following the direction they received from Hennepin County, which was the pass-through grand tour, not to record those revenues and expenditures in your, in your financial statements. Apparently, when they got the word from their auditors that that isn't how it was supposed to be done, they passed that along to the city and you had to make that adjustment. We had to go back and essentially redo that single audit for the prior year. And even though that really isn't something that was caused by anything you did here at the city, we did have to give a compliance finding for that because that CIFA that was issued last year was incorrect. Any questions about that?
No.
Then I will move along to some of the financial information in our management report. We always include some information on your governmental fund revenues. In total, in your governmental funds, which is all of your funds except for your enterprise funds, you took in revenue of about $33 million this year. That was down about 5%, roughly $1.7 million from the year before. Here you see it broken out on a per capita basis at an amount of to about $876 per capita, which was down 111 from the year before. The difference really came in two areas. The tax increments were down about $52 per capita, and that's primarily because you got rid of one of your TIF districts that was decertified in 2010, so your tax increments coming from that district ran away in 2011. And your intergovernmental revenue dropped about $43 per capita, and that was primarily two things. One, you lost about $533 of local government aid, and also you received less in street project reimbursements this year. The primary revenue source for your governmental fund operations is property taxes. I get roughly half of your revenue in the governmental funds and about 74% of your general fund revenue through your property tax levies. This table shows your tax capacity rates over the last two levy years as compared to the metro area and statewide average. The city's levy percentage has been higher than average due to several reasons. First of all, you've had to increase your levy to replace some of the state aids that you've lost in recent years, both the market value homestead credit and local government aid. Also, you've had some new debt issues in recent years, so there's been additional debt levies. And the other factor that's increasing most of our, most of our clients' tax capacity is the change in market values. This graph shows your local tax capacity, which is the result of taking those market values multiplied by the extension rates for the various property classes, and this is the base that you levy and spread your taxes on. You can see you've had a decrease in tax capacity for the last three levy years. That was about a 9.5% decrease for the 2011 year. Moving on to the expenditure side, you spent about $41.7 million in your governmental funds in 2011. That was about 15%, or roughly $7.4 million less than the year before. The decrease came in two areas. First, in the current expenditures there, you were about $108 per capita less than the year before. You were down in every category, but the big change there was primarily in your HRA expenditures, which are included as part of the city here. That's in that all other category, which is about $82 lower than the year before. And capital outlay was down about $179 per capita. You had some fairly significant projects wrapping up in 2010, including building this facility, which, so your capital expenditures were higher than typical the last few years. Then drilling down to your general fund, your primary operating fund, you had about $7.4 million in cash in that fund at the end of the year. That's an increase of $86,000 from the year before. And fund balance, you had just under $7 million. You were about $124,000 higher than you budgeted, you budgeted break even, so your total fund balance increased $124,000. As a percentage of your annual operating expenditures, that represents about 36%, which is right where you were last year. As far as a percentage, you're very stable from year to year. General fund revenues for 2011 were about $18.2 million. You were about 4%, $683,000 higher than budget. You were higher than budget in taxes by about $265,000. You came in better than projected in delinquencies, abatements, and also tax credit aid than you had projected in your budget. Licenses and permits were about $130,000 higher than budget. You did have a little bit more construction activity than you had projected. And service charges were about $186,000 higher than budget. And that is actually moving your street lighting here instead of in a separate enterprise fund. As far as change from the previous year, your total revenues were about $900,000, or roughly 5% higher than the previous year. Taxes were about $1.1 million higher than the prior year in the general fund due to the increase in your levy to replace the state aid you've lost. Intergovernmental revenue was about $510,000 less than prior year. Most of that was that $533,000 decrease in your local government aid. You can see very clearly from the graph, from the five-year trend there, the increase in your tax levy over the last five years as that intergovernmental revenue is going the other way. And that is really something we're seeing with all the cities that we audit. On the expenditure side, you spent about $19.2 million in the general fund in 2011. You were about 1.6% under the final budget, or $303,000. You were slightly under budget in essentially all the categories. The biggest variances were in general government, where you were about $144,000 under budget, mainly in personnel costs. And fire expenditures were about $83,000 under budget. General fund revenues actually increased about $408,000, or 2.2% from the year before. Primarily, that was in public safety, mainly in budgeted personnel cost increases. And moving on to some of your non-governmental funds, your enterprise funds, the first one is your water and sewer fund. You ended the year with about $12.3 million in net assets in this fund, down $76,000 from the year before. The unrestricted portion of this is about $3 million. The rest of that represents your net investment in capital assets in that water and sewer fund. Operating revenues were about $6.5 million in this fund for 2011, which was up 7% from the year before. You had a small increase in both billing rates and consumption in this fund driving that revenue up. Operating expenses were $6.4 million. They were up about 1.8% or $115,000. And the biggest change there was an increase in your sewer disposal costs. One thing you can see from the trend line there, the green trend line shows your operating income, your net operating income, including depreciation. The red is excluding depreciation. You can see for the first time in the last four years, your operating revenue is sufficient to cover all of your operating costs, including those non-out-of-pocket depreciation costs. In the storm sewer fund, you ended the year with net assets of 4.3 million, down about $50,000 from the year before. The unrestricted portion of that was 1.1 million. Your operating revenues in this fund were $992,000, up just slightly, about 1.2% from the year before, about $12,000. Operating costs were $955,000, which are actually $41,000, or roughly 4% less than last year. Again, here, this is the first time in five years that your operating revenues were sufficient to cover your operating costs, including depreciation. The recreation fund ended the year with just under $5 million in total net assets, a decrease of $390,000 from the year before. Of that, you've got about $122,000 in unrestricted net assets. Your operating revenues were about $1.1 million, which is a 4% decrease from the year before. Primarily, that was due to a change in how you're managing your miniature golf facility now through a new service concession arrangement. Operating expenses were about $1.54 million. They were about 1% up from the year before. Most of that was increased depreciation. Finally, your liquor fund ended the year with net assets of about $2.9 million, increase of $232,000. You've got 1.5 of that 2.9. It represents unrestricted financial net assets. Gross sales for the year were about $11.2 million, an increase of about 0.7%. Your operating income was up about a half a percent as well. And you can see a very steady operation. You continue to have better both gross profit and operating income as a percent of gross sales than the average municipal off-sale liquor store, and you're well above the profit margin for the industry average for a non-municipal.
It was in the paper this week, today.
Pardon?
About, yeah, today, about Richfield was making a decent profit on liquor sales.
Yeah, that fund has been real steady for the last five years that we've been auditing. Any questions about any of the fund information that I just went over?
Counsel?
So, in summary, clean opinion on the financial statements again this year, clean opinion on the federal single audit again this year. No deficiencies in internal control or compliance on either the financial statement or single audit in 2011. You did have the one Minnesota legal compliance issue with the public purpose expenditure, and we did have the restatement of the 2010 CIFA, which I explained as well. General fund remains in very stable financial condition, right where you were last year. Fund balance just under $7 million, about 36% of your annual expenditures. You're right in the OSA Office of the State Auditor recommendation is 35 to 50% of fund balance, or I'm sorry, of expenditures and fund balance, you're right in that range. And your fund balance is about $124,000 better than projected in the budget. So, all in all, positive financial results.
Great, that's good news.
Any other questions?
Counsel? I just, you know, this is, this is hard work to keep, you know, the revenue and the budget balanced, and I know that things have come up, too, that we were, were very unexpected, and you've been able to shift priorities. So, I want to say how much I appreciate being able to do that. It's been year after year that we see really good audits like this. So, and there's been a lot of cities who haven't had those. So, we appreciate that here in Richfield. That's one thing we can tout, considering everything else that's happened with the economy. And staff want to comment on?
You know, it's, it's a challenge sometimes, but, you know, after a while, you get used to some of the things that the state trickles down to us and things like that, and Steve is, Steve's a big help with it, and Bill's staff puts me through the wringer each year, and I learn a few things each time from him and stuff like that, so. It's been, it's been good.
You know, and I would say that what we've done, I think, you know, trends through that we have been absorbing the losses of intergovernmental revenue and taking, you know, taking it onto the tax base, but trying to feather that so it's not a huge imposition on taxpayers. And at the same time, the other funds that we've had, the water and sewer funds, storm sewer, all of those, you know, we, again, are kind of feathering them back to where they're operating in the green again.
I understand.
After spending cash down to make some of the capital improvements that we did. So, you know, we are sitting in a really good, in a really good position right now, and, you know, I want to, one thing I wanted to emphasize is that we saw the article in the paper today that talked about municipal liquor operations, and it kind of, you know, part of the article, it was, well, there are some cities that manage their liquor operations well, and there are some cities that don't. We're fortunate that we're one of the ones that are, that have done a good job, but I thought it was really heartening to see that when you talk about operating income, we were about 1.1% better than the average municipal liquor operation and way better than the average private in the state of Minnesota. So, I think that once we get the Lindell Liquor Store remodeling done and all that development takes place on Lindell Avenue, I think you're going to see it ratchet back up again. And we're, we're running, you know, close to a 26% gross margin in the liquor operations, and that's very solid. So, if you can get to peak the sales up, running a 20, you know, 25 and a half to 26% gross margin, we're going to see even better performance.
That's wonderful. That's really great news, and that really helps our city out. And I really appreciate your hard work, too. Thank you for coming here and presenting. It's nice, though, that you have good news.
Yep.
That helps. Counselmember.
And I'll just give my annual spiel, which is what Richfield does and does well, and one of the things we've been doing very well, thanks to staff, is living within our budget and making good decisions about how we, we pay for things. So, thank you, staff.
Thank you for coming tonight.
You.
We have council discussion with council participation in the Fourth of July parade is the first thing.
May I just say that I think officially you have to accept the report?
Oh, do I officially? Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the audit reports presented this evening?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Who's opposed? Reports are accepted. Thanks. You, you don't put those motions and give us directions. We don't know what we're doing up here. Isn't that terrible? And awful. That's the truth. They write it all down for us up here. I have instructions. Yeah, I know, I know. They do give us good instructions on this. Fourth of July parade. Participation. Counsel?
Are we biking again, or are we doing something different?
I have to tell you that I don't mind the biking, except that we stop a lot and that we end up running around a lot because it goes so slow. That's my only.
We do a lot of.
Yeah, we do a lot of meandering. So, I guess I would be okay even walking in the parade.
I have to issue a full disclosure. I, for some unknown reason, have lost all pulse in my right lower extremities, so I have to go in for an angiogram. So, I'm not sure if I'm going to be walking or riding or just waving from a float. I go in on June 14th, I have every, every reason to believe that I will be fully ambulatory and able to physically perform any endeavor. So, let's set it down for what everybody agrees to, and I will make it a point to make sure I am physically capable.
Well, we want to make, make sure that you can go.
I can, I will be, I will be there one way or the other.
We'll pull you in a little red way.
There you go, we could put them in a wagon.
Or we can do a tandem.
We could do a tandem bike. I could steer and someone can pedal, but no. Walking might, you know, it gives us a little bit better chance to mingle and to talk to people, because we do, we go back and forth, and we kind of get all separated, and then we're catching up, and we get, we go past large tracts of people that we'd really like to maybe say hello to.
The only concern I would have is that we don't want to slow the parade down.
We won't. It's, we stop so much. I don't think, people walk in that parade all over the bands march. I don't think, we have to be cognizant of where we're at and that it keeps going when you're talking to people, so you can't stop forever.
I would expect, given the meandering, that we'll walk every bit as fast as we rode.
Yeah, I bet. You know, we'll get, I'll ask the girl scouts to carry our banner again. You know, we'll get, I'll ask the Girl Scouts to carry our banner again.
Did they do it last year?
Yes, they did. I have some Girl Scouts. It was really nice. They carried that banner, so they knew who the city council was.
Do you want to leave the option open in case you might have to ride a bike?
We could always figure out how to tell them.
Vehicle or walk?
Actually, walking is easier than riding.
Yeah. Okay. All right. We'll figure it out. As we go.
So, we do need to ask to have a...
A permit.
A permit in the parade.
What is, what is the, does anybody know what the theme of the Fourth of July is? Staff? This year? Oh. That would be kind of nice to know as soon as we could too, because we, somebody, I did, they did t-shirts last year. Who's doing t-shirts? Who's doing t-shirts this year? I did them last year. You did them here before. No, you did them before. Then you did them.
To my turn?
I think it's your turn. We'll give you some help if you need some help.
T-shirts.
And also, we do is just, I just, I contacted somebody to do my design, and I don't know. You contacted somebody.
You can borrow my daughter if you need to design.
There you go. We'll just get the theme and just big, bold lettering is all for our names. Thank you. Passing the buck. This is council discussion. I wanted to talk about the time capsule. And city manager, I guess I need your attention a little bit because I have one of my things that I promised to bring. This, if you can see it, is the ribbon from the crosstown cutting of the opening. And I thought this would be something really neat to wrap up and roll up and put in there. It's got little barrels on it. It's got the roads kind of thing. So, this is what I got. They all got a piece of the ribbon. I got the bow when I was over at the cutting. So, I would like to donate this for the time capsule.
I have to.
How big is the time capsule?
I got to ask. How big is that thing? Yeah.
Actually, it can be rolled up, I think.
Well, to put an addition on.
I also will donate my centennial pin that I've been wearing. My centennial pin I'll donate, because I have my centennial pin. And then I had asked city manager, I don't know if you've been able to get to this, there was a picture of all the mayors that were still alive at that last centennial celebration to dig that up so that we could get that put in there. That would be wonderful to see. So, and I don't know if Jim Topitzhoffer has those centennial pictures or not. So, that would be something. And we're working on something here?
Well, you had talked about getting some pictures from the, from the, the new mini-golf place.
Yes.
And we have them. We just couldn't find them, but apparently someone just found them, which is kind of exciting.
Oh, good, 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 good. Okay.
Because I couldn't find them.
I was wondering why I was distracting you so much. Just like, okay, what, I'm glad, I'm glad that you found those too. So, those are, those are some things. Does, if council have other things that they want? I guess I asked too if we had a little piece of brick from the old building put in there, something of the old building, something.
Well, Mayor, the, what I did is I made a display. I took, I had some pieces salvaged from the, the old building and made a display of it, which I was, I'm hoping would be a display that would stay in the new city hall, that has the brick, the different kind of brick veneers and some of the other pieces of the old building so that, you know, it's one thing for people, you know, people, well, like us folks who are, we're so used to seeing that building. That's one thing. But people, you know, fifteen, twenty years from now, who come into this city hall and wonder, you know, they see the picture of the old city hall, but it would be kind of interesting, for example, for me, if I, if there would have been something solid for me to look at of the old city, the original city hall that sat on the corner up here at sixty-seventh, the white building, like a piece of siding out of it or something. You could see actually the siding material that it was made out of and actually what color it was and maybe some of that kind of thing. So, that's why I had asked that we salvaged all that stuff and put it into a display case, so people who walk into this city hall could have a better sense of, but I think that's all the bricks that are left, is the ones that are in that display.
All right. Okay. I would like to come up with other ideas. Okay. That was really neat. You were, you donated something, didn't you?
Yes, I did. The Little League baseball that, when the East and West Ridgefield merged for a couple of years and then went in their opposite directions again, but...
That was cool.
They were merged for a couple of years.
That's really neat. Okay. And then you got the pictures. So, a lot of people might not know that there's been a significant upgrade over at the farmer's market with our lovely new cafe over there and the upgraded menu and everything. And I think we have some pictures, so I'm going to let staff show some of the pictures of that. Are we up?
We will be in a second.
Okay.
Okay, I think the slideshow is not going to run, is going to run itself in a minute now.
Okay.
There it goes.
All right.
Well, we're automated.
You know, there's cappuccinos there now. I see all these people walking around with Starbucks. Now, you can get it right here in Ridgefield, down at the farmer's market. Hot teas. There's the rental bikes, rental bikes you can rent right there. Another wonderful feature that's been added. This is the mini-golf that they've redone inside, extensive rework on that.
And notice the waterfall is working again.
Yes.
That hasn't worked for a long time, and that was really the key center, centerpiece to that whole mini-golf operation.
Mm-hmm. It's just all...
It's been all re-refurbished.
Mm-hmm. They're, they are planning a grand opening as well for this, a big celebration to, to do this. But, yeah, it's so much nicer than it was. Definitely needed a facelift there. Better signage.
I was going to say, Mayor Rodney, the gentleman who's putting this together, who's put this all together, is in the audience, sitting there with Jim Topitzhoffer. He, and we dealt with this, what, maybe a couple of months ago, I think we brought this forward, to have this facility, the lease extended, and then this, Rodney at his own expense had improved the facility in exchange for letting him operate this for a certain period of time. But it's, for people who haven't seen it, we, you know, we simply, the city of Ridgefield didn't have the, we just didn't have the wherewithal to put this facility back into the condition that it was when we opened it up. And really, on our capital improvements schedule, really didn't have...
Didn't fit.
A placeholder there basically to do the kind of improvements to the building, to make the, you know, to make the kind of mall shop sort of thing that we have here. And, and so, this is a great partnership between public and private to take an amenity that we have down there that's just a, it's a little jewel, I think, and really highlight it and, and get people to go down there and see what we have.
Yeah. And come see the caf, the cafe with the umbrellas. I saw people sitting out there right away on those, and there weren't even, the flowers weren't even finished and done. It's so beautiful. Did you want to come up and say a couple of things about that? Please, come on up. This is, this is exciting to see such improvement come to our city parks.
Yeah. First of all, I want to say thank you. We've gotten such support from the community and the, the visitors down at the park already. And even just the excitement among our employees, just to see patios built, new furniture, new menu, coffee, ice cream. And Jim and his staff have been so supportive and helpful down there. Our grand opening will be open now this weekend and then every day thereafter for the summer. And we still have quite a bit to do yet this week with new signage. The flowers are being planted this week. We're working on the lights starting tomorrow. So, there's still a bit of work to be done. But for our grand opening on June fifteenth through seventeenth, we are having a ribbon cutting. We're having free inflatables for kids and discounted prices and just trying to draw some more people in. At all other, other locations in the Twin Cities, we have big signage now that promotes the Ridgefield Park and are giving out a handout to every customer that comes through to those as well. So, we're trying to drive traffic down to this park, which we think too is, like you said, is just a jewel that, you know, many people outside of here don't know about. So, thank you.
Thank you for being a great partner here at Ridgefield.
I have a question, Mayor.
Please.
Well, the, I was there today with a bunch of kids, daycare kids from Bernie's, and the bathrooms were locked up. Is that because you don't open until this weekend?
Yes.
Okay. They were kind enough to open them because twenty-five kids going into the satellite will not work. And so, I appreciated the people who were there that unlocked the door for them. But I, I'm glad that, that you're going to have them unlock them during the daytime.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Lots of great news. I have another bit of really good news, a letter here from the Metropolitan Council. This is in regards to the livable communities transit-oriented development grant application for the Lindell Garden Center. And it's from the chair, Sue Hague. Sent me a nice little note. I am pleased to inform you that the city's proposal for Livable Communities Act Transit-Oriented Development Funding for the Lindell Garden Project was selected by the Met Council to receive a grant award of one point five million dollars attached to the information detailing the use of which funds will be awarded. The draft agreement for the grant is being prepared for the city by review. And, and so, it has the, the project summary and everything about refurbishing the Lindell Garden site gowns for vibrant retail and the housing phase and the mix that they'll have there, creating shortened distances for transit, retail areas and housing. And so, it gives a lot of things about what will come to the community for that. So, it's very nice that the Livable Communities Act finally, we were able to get one of those grants. So, I want to, I know that staff supported this. We did as well as the council, and I think that project will be better because of that. So, I'm excited to see that. I have one more item. I have a lot of items tonight. You know, sometimes I have nothing, and here tonight I have a whole bunch. I just wanted to talk about, there had been some communications going around the city and some postings on certain people's websites and stuff about issues around the swallows that are in Veterans Park, specifically sometimes under the pavilion. What, what people need to understand is that there was a system that was put in that was a noise system to drive away the swallows. Not that we don't want them in the park, we want them in the park. We just don't want them underneath the pavilion. For various reasons, people are inhabiting that a lot there, very disturbing for both of them. And so, we just were, we were, we had concerns also because we are serving food there, and this becomes a public health issue. And it's a significant public health issue because there are diseases associated with the excrement of birds. And so, I've actually asked staff to address this just a little bit further and comment on, on the issues around that and what we've been doing to address that, to let people know that we are being very concerned about the wildlife, and we are doing everything above board and within permitted regulations.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. You know, let me start off by saying that this is something that we have been dealing with for quite a while. Obviously, that the picnic shelter there provides kind of an ideal structure for, for bird species like barn swallows and provides them shelter, so they come in there, they build their nests. And then, and then, of course, you'd have the, you know, you have some of the unpleasant side effects that go with it. And, you know, as you mentioned, because of the fact that we have farmer's market there, we have events being provided under that shelter rented from us, we had to deal with the sparrow, with the, with the swallow issue. So, we dealt with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and kind of worked a plan with them. And we, we talked to them last fall, I think both September, October timeframe, and then in December again. And then we had a plan that we implemented April first. There, there are things that you can do and things you can't do when it comes to these swall, barn swallows. You can't, you can't go in and destroy a nest that has either the little, I think, what do they call fledglings or baby birds or whatever they are, or eggs in it. You, if, if that's in it, you have to leave the nest alone. However, if, if those things aren't present, then you can take the nest down. And that's, that's the plan that we have, and that's the procedure that we're following. We also went through and installed a, a call system that mimics birds of prey call, like hawks, I believe, or those kinds of things. And that has really kept the population of the barn swallows down in that, in that shelter. Unfortunately, sometime in the past couple of weeks, some person or persons went in there and actually slit, cut the wires to some of the speakers, tore some of the speaker, some of the wires right out of the speakers, and, you know, rendered the, the system inoperable. And that went on for probably a few days before we were able to, before we knew it. And so, then we, we dealt with the situation, found that it had been vandalized. I actually had the recreation department file a police report. And it's going to be, you know, it's going to have a, a cost to the city to go back and fix that system. We already have part of the system back up and running, but I need to have all the speakers running again. And I think that because it's apparently so inviting for somebody to come in and just snip wires or tear wires out of speakers, that we'll have to install, you know, aluminum conduit to get the speaker wire up to the speakers. And we're also looking at, you know, maybe some other potential solutions as well. They're all going to cost some money, of course. But, you know, and I could, I think I'd have Jim address this, but when you have the farmer's market going on and you have bird droppings and you have birds kind of dive, you know, kind of, kind of diving at people, that's not a good situation. And I understand that there's even been some family events where, where people have been so disturbed by that that they've requested their money back. And maybe you can address some, a little bit of that, Jim.
Sure. We, sure. I'm sorry. Jim Topitzhoffer, I'm the Parks and Recreation Director. We have had to issue some refunds for people that just had a bad experience. The birds tend to swoop and dive at people, you know, to protect their nest area. And it, there's always food present there when there's people there. There's always food present there. And clearly, droppings right on the tables. And so, our own Health Department is actually issuing a statement on the matter, you know, with their advice, you know, that we really try to control the problem just based on a health concern.
Let me just add one thing. We'll come back to the city council and put together a more comprehensive report about what we've done and what we intend to do. And again, I want to ensure that we have, we have a system out there that ensures that we will not destroy nests that have eggs or, or small birds in them. Now, the procedure is beginning in the months of March and early April. We have a system where it's kind of a weekly inspection on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday that we take a look at, at what's going on in those nests. And if they're empty, we take the nest down, then we have city staff come in thereafter and with water, with water truck or something, hose that down to get the, the mud and stuff off of there. So, it's a procedure that we're using. You know, it's, it's a community park, and we don't, you know, we certainly want there to be birds in the, in the, in the park there, but we've got to find a solution to make sure that those birds have a better place to do their nesting than inside that park shelter.
Yeah. We don't need people getting diseases from the bird droppings either. That's a concern. So, I look forward to hearing more about that. Tom Fitz Henry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two things I'd like to mention. We've got a couple of public meetings coming up for those in my word. First one is you're invited to attend an open house to kick off the construction of Seventy-Sixth Street Reconstruction Project. The project is scheduled to begin in early June. Project staff, including multiple representatives from the city, HR Green and contractor, will be available to discuss the project schedule, construction progression, and answer questions. Also, ongoing neighborhood meetings will be held, but this one will be held on Wednesday, the twenty-third, at six P.M. at the corner of Seventy-Sixth Street and Sixteenth Avenue. There also is information on our website, and you could also join on Facebook if you wish to. And the second item is the city will host a neighborhood information meeting to discuss the possible reconstruction of Ridgefield Parkway Phase Two between Sixty-Third and Sixty-Fifth Street. This will be on Thursday, May twenty-fourth, at six-thirty P.M. to be at the Ridgefield Public Works Building, which is off Sixty-Sixth Street and Cedar, on, toward the airport in the lunchroom. The city will host an information meeting to present the following items: Taft Lake Storm Water Project, the Richfield Parkway North Connection, which is the roadway, Bloomington Avenue to 17th Avenue, and Richfield Parkway Phase 2, which is the 63rd to 65th Street. If you're unable to attend the meeting or have questions, you can also contact Kristin Nasher, the city engineer, and the phone would be (612) 861-9795. Again, (612) 861-9795. And the other thing I'd like to mention, I went to the unity in the community, and it was quite different this year. We saw the, back to the, well, the swing dancing, which was kind of interesting there, watching the couple swing dance, and I thought that was kind of unique in the way they were dressed. So I just wanted to mention that. And the park looked great down there with all the additions.
Good.
Where will the meeting on 16th Avenue if it's raining that night?
The park, which one is that?
The, on the continuation of 76th Street.
That's it. It's the quarter of 76th and 16th.
No, what if it's raining?
I don't know. Bring a raincoat? I don't know.
Umbrella.
Do we have an alternative?
Umbrella.
Umbrella, okay.
Really? So if it's bad weather, there's nowhere to go?
I don't believe they have an alternative site. They were going to meet at the corner.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Sandel?
Thank you. I have a couple of things that I'm going to ask councilperson.
To put over on the projector.
I'm going to put it up on there for me. The first one is a announcement regarding the free summer concert, concerts being held in the park at Augsburg Park.
That's not the first one.
This one. Okay, we'll get the right one.
That's the other one. Sorry. There we go. It's being sponsored by the Richfield Bloomington Credit Union. And the very first one is the June 19th Teddy Bear Band at noon on Tuesday. So all of the kids' concerts are going to be held on Tuesdays at noon, starting on the 19th. And I've seen the Teddy Bear Band many times and always enjoyed it, so that's a great event if you want to mark it on your calendars. And the first evening concert, which will be on Thursdays at 7:00, will be June 7th, the Richfield Symphonic Band, which is our own symphonic band. So those are great events. They're free, you can't beat the price, and Augsburg Park is such a locate, great location to watch the concerts. So put them on your calendar. After you go to the first ones, I'm sure you'll want to continue. So that's the first one. And then my bi-weekly reminder, the dedication is coming up. It's Saturday, June 2nd. It'll be from 9:00 to 1:00. All sorts of interesting events. The, there will be a helicopter landing at 10:00. The mayor will be doing some ribbon cutting and the, the memory, the opening and closing of the box at noon, I believe. And lots of fun events for the kids in the park behind. So it's, it'll be a lot of fun. Pay attention, there's going to be a big ad, I think, in the Richfield Sun there, so watch for that, and be sure to come. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Rogie?
I am.
Councilmember?
A couple of things, like Councilmember Fitz Henry, I got over to the unity celebration and also saw the swing dancing. And contrary to popular belief, I wasn't around when that got started, wasn't familiar with Benny Goodman, but I still find it's very enjoyable. And the indigenous dance troupe that followed was absolutely amazing.
Yes, I've been there several times.
All sizes and every, and, and the costumes and the headwear and everything else is, was really, really interesting to watch. And I'll give credit to, to a single drummer that, that kept the beat and kept them all moving and had them all in rhythm. It was really outstanding.
Tough to have them in here sometimes.
Yeah, it was really impressive to see. I also managed to spend an hour, an hour and a half at the Penn Central Open House with some of the commercial spaces between about 64th and 67th and Penn. And the, the turnout for the first one was, was good. There were commercial real estate brokers, and, and the bank opened its doors and let everybody come in. I would like to express my gratitude, and I think all the people that are involved in Penn Central, Gordon Hanson, for really putting that together, getting Mary Jane Smotanka to have a really nice article in the Star Tribune about it, and really be the driving force. A lot of people involved, but I think Gordon really is entitled to, to the kudos for putting this one together, so that was great. One other thing, and this is, is more along the lines of, of discussion. After the work session last night, and I, I stayed for a little bit of the HRA meeting when I was leaving, one of the, one of the local members of the, the organization that's interested in Pillsbury Commons asked if he could talk to me and asked a question about a comment I made at the October 25th, 2011 City Council meeting. And it involved the, the Grandview Project that, that Ron Clark and his development team built, and I was involved in some litigation with that project. And there was some concern, and I, I didn't have a chance to go back and look at the tape, but I'd mentioned the fact that I'd been involved in it. And I think, he didn't interpret it, but he had a concern as to whether or not I'd actually ever represented Ron Clark or any of his businesses. And I told him, contrary to that, I was in that litigation because Ron Clark sued my client. So we were not only, not, we were on the same side theoretically, just in a construction litigation, but I was involved in that litigation because he sued my client, not because I had any interest in what he was doing or what that litigation was about from his perspective. So I just wanted to clarify that. I figured that if, if Barry may have misinterpreted that, other people could have also, and I just wanted to make it clear that I've never represented Mr. Clark or any of his business endeavors, and, and so I just wanted to make sure that was understood. Thank you.
Thanks for doing that. That's very considerate. Thank you. At this time, I'd ask for council to approve the agenda with one item C removed from the consent calendar for consideration.
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion, changes? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Motion carries. The consent calendar, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The consent calendar, for those watching here in the audience or at home, is, contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions have also been approved, and no further city council action on those items is necessary. So tonight, we're left with two items on the consent calendar. Item A is consideration of approval of a word of contract to AirTech Thermex Corporation to replace the lower floor air conditioning unit at the community center in the amount of $19,825. Item B is consideration of approval of amendment to commercial lease with Minnesota Department of Transportation and amendment of lease agreement with the Transportation Shop Incorporated for the parking lot at Cedar Avenue and Diagonal Boulevard. And that concludes the consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
It's your discussion.
Just a quick question. I don't know, Mr. DeBitch, I'm, I'm just curious, the bids were fairly broad from $19,000, $19,500, which was the winning bid, to $34,000. The, the winning bid was 66.5% of the next closest bid. That's a really, really wide deviation, and I'm just curious as to how someone could come in. I, you know, I, I don't anticipate seeing any change orders or additional requests, but that's a wide deviation in bids.
Councilmember Elliot, I totally agree with that. That raised our eyebrows as well. When we looked at the specific equipment that they were bidding, it was identical to the other ones. So we felt it was safe to accept it. And we had conversations about the costs with them as well, and we, we're reasonably assured that they'll be able to deliver the product at that cost.
If, if the, if the mechanicals are the same, then it's, it's time and labor, and I'm just wondering if there's, if there's a pretty obvious disparity. And I, I'm assuming we don't get into the time and labor, but I'm just concerned about, about the workforce that they may be employing in, in terms of, it seems, if that's the case, it has to be really coming in at, at a low hourly rate.
Yeah, that's a, I mean, it's something that we're going to be watching very closely, and if, if you felt strong about it, I mean, we could consider going up to the next, next quota amount to, to be safe, but...
I don't think it's, it's necessary. I just, I, I, I think you've indicated that, that you've had the same concerns that I had in looking at it, and I think that's sufficient in just keeping an eye on it, make sure that, that, that they're, they're meeting all the Department of Labor and Industry standards and everything across the board, because we don't want to get caught up in something like that.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Or change orders.
Yeah, yeah.
Agreed.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Rogie?
I, I asked to have C removed on the consent, just so we can have a discussion on it first. Are any of these expenses, the way they're broken down here, about the neighborhood meeting that's going to occur on Thursday night, or is this strictly about the roadway? I'm, I'm a little bit confused about what these numbers represent. Is it blacktop, or is it property?
Now, the numbers you're talking about in the financial estimate in C?
Yeah.
Those are, those are the, all the project costs. So it's everything from, not just the hard costs, you know, like concrete and whatnot, but also, I don't know, engineering costs, appraisal costs, those sorts of things.
But not land values? That's what I'm trying to get. The reason I, I'm concerned is that if, if we're, I, I wish we would wait till after the meeting on Thursday night and move this to the next meeting, is what I'm going to ask the council to consider, because I'd like to know what the result of the meeting is with the neighborhood on Thursday night.
Madam Mayor, members, Councilmember Rogie, the reason we put this on here is that, if you recall, at the study session, we talked about staff was kind of reluctant to go to a neighborhood without giving, getting some kind of very specific direction from the council. Would you like us to start down this road or not? All this does is it begins, if, if, if we do end up selling, selling a bond, we'll be able to recover all the costs, including all those that start as of tonight, you know, staff time or, or appraiser time, or any, any of the costs that we begin to occur. And so it's kind of a, a housekeeping function so we can start the clock. And the second function would be so that we are, we don't want to be at that neighborhood meeting without a specific direction from the council. You recall in the study session that no formal action could be taken, and so this was the opportunity to take a formal action.
But I think we gave you direction that we're willing to do this if everybody is going to move in that direction. And I really don't want to be looking at this until after they've had that meeting and to know, because otherwise, we're going to be going down a different road here. That's my concern.
But we are considering costs, and I want to make sure that those costs can be tracked and traced back to this.
But this, this has nothing to do with whether or not the, the owners of those homes are willing to move forward now.
I understand that, but we still, and we still are doing other work, though, along with this, I believe.
If I'm in, it's...
But we won't be if they're not selling.
It, yeah, it's my recollection that there were two options. One was do the assessment and have it driven by the city council. The other was, was the resident. And that's what the, the Thursday meeting about is. And it, it says in here that, you know, requiring a petition from the neighbors to trigger the assessment of the project. That's, that's what we opted for, was the second option. And my assumption is the same as Councilmember Rogie's, that that's what the Thursday meeting's about. And that will trigger it and, and move us forward so that this is more appropriately comes up at the next council meeting as opposed to this one.
Is there any, going to be any concern if we delay this at all?
No. All this resolution does, and it, it doesn't matter, if council doesn't feel comfortable passing it now, then pass it at the next meeting, or don't pass it at all if we're not going to go forward. And all this resolution does is it sets a starting point, is when you can start recovering the costs that you've incurred in a particular project. Is two weeks going to make a world of difference on this? No. It's just that whatever costs we've, we incur from today till the next meeting wouldn't, you couldn't go back and, and recoup. It's probably not going to be very much in the way of costs. It doesn't matter to me.
Other councilmembers weigh in? Okay, excuse me, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I, I think what, the purpose of this is to prevent, prevent us, prevent a city from going back and saying, well, we talked about this two years ago, and we spent some money on it, so let's throw that in there, and we can sell a bond to pay that back. You can't do that unless you formally start the project and say you're going to start the clock on the expenses that you might incur. If the project never occurs, of course, there's no bond, we aren't able to recover the costs. But if we do get to a bond and can recover, we can start tonight and, you know, any of the costs we incur in, in all the meeting that's coming up, or between now and, that would start the clock. But if you would prefer, we could have that meeting and not start the clock for another two weeks. We just lose the chance to maybe recover some fairly modest amount of costs.
I feel more confident if we do what we kind of gave the direction was, is to meet with the neighbors first, and, and we're kind of not doing that.
I'd like to hear from Councilmember Fitz Henry, because this is his area. Ms. Moore?
What I'm looking at is, we're still going to do what we recommended. We're going to listen to the group and that, but I'd like to see us, you know, if, if there's funds available to get us reimbursed, which there are, it seems to, with all the entities we're dealing with, to get this on paper so that we get our money back. It doesn't say that we have to do anything special here, just saying that we're going to incur costs. We realize that, and we're starting the clock so we can basically put this in account saying this is how much it cost us so far.
That's, that's what it is. It's just that the reimbursement would be back through the bonds.
Right.
Yeah. Councilmember Sandel?
I would concur with councilperson Fitz Henry. I think it's, it sends a message that yes, this is something that the council is interested in doing, and that if we go forward, that the costs will be reimbursed so that, it makes sense that we, we cover as much of our costs as we can, especially when we have other people who may be paying some of them. And it doesn't, you know, if we get there and there's a decision and a strong neighborhood feeling that that's not what they want, and should be something different, and the whole city agrees, we don't go forward.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, so I think we should, we should pass on it today.
I would support it today as well.
I guess my question is, is why did we even talk about a resident, resident-driven petition then?
This is starting that process. I would say that, that this, this action would be starting the process of directing us, we're saying, this is the process we're going to follow, we're going to have the meeting on Thursday, and all the costs involved leading up to that and following that, that should we proceed with the project, all of those costs could be recovered if the council wanted to. And it could start the clock now.
And I will go ahead and move it, that we adopt the attached resolution authorizing city staff to incur costs for the reconstruction of Richfield Parkway Phase 2 from 63rd to 65th Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. The next item we have is consideration of a resolution supporting the intercity regional trail master plan. Three Rivers Park District is nearing completion of the master plan for the intercity regional trail. As part of the plan approval process, the Park District is requesting a resolution to support from local agencies in which the proposed trail will reside. Staff from the Park District presented the master plan to the Richfield Transportation Commission at their meeting on April 4th, 2012. The city council, at a work session, May 8th, 2012, a copy of the presentation is attached. The Transportation Commission unanimously recommended the resolution to support at the meeting for, on May 2nd. The intercity regional master plan reflects the input from both the public and the multi-agency staff through the multiple meetings of open houses. Three Rivers Park District has secured the federal funds for the construction of the trail and is proposing to begin work in 2014. And we have, please introduce yourself. This is from Three Rivers Park District. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelly Gresman. I'm the Director of Planning with Three Rivers Park District, and I saw you guys two weeks, it's two weeks ago. It's nice to see you again.
Yep, welcome back.
And I have the presentation up that we reviewed two weeks ago, and I think what I'm going to do just very quickly for the audience is to not do the whole presentation tonight, unless you would like that, but to focus on what the approved route is so that there's clear understanding as to where the trail will go and where the trail will not be going. So the map before you shows the entire city of Richfield with Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail going east-west along 75th and 76th Street, from one border to the other border. And then the green dashed or dotted line along the eastern border, generally paralleling 77, would be the intercity regional trail, and that's what we are here to discuss tonight. And the intercity regional trail would essentially connect, I'm going to, the Minneapolis grad rounds to the north with the Mall of America and the Minnesota River Valley to the south by way of the city of Richfield. And it would have a new pedestrian crossing over 62 and a new pedestrian bicycle crossing over Interstate 494 at 12th Avenue as well. And so this map, while it's relatively small on the screen, it shows the different routes that were understudied. And the route that was selected is the red line. Generally, it goes from the Bloomington Avenue Bridge over Trunk Highway 62 through Taft Park, would utilize the new Richfield Parkway down to 66th Street. The north side of 66th, 6th Street to Cedar Avenue continues south, paralleling Cedar Avenue to 76th Street, headed west towards Edina. At 12th Avenue, it would turn and go south over 494 at a brand-new bridge structure and continue into Bloomington. There are two different areas that we are going to be looking at during the design development to confirm that this route is absolutely the best route that we should proceed. And it would be the intersection of 66 and Cedar. There is an alternative route that we can look at, which is shown on the map here, and instead of going on the north side of 66 between Richfield Parkway and Cedar Avenue, it would cut through, it would cross 66 at Richfield Parkway and utilize some city-owned land and be a little more recreational in nature versus the road-based route. And the other, excuse me, the other area we're still looking at is the 12th Avenue corridor. There's residential properties on both the east and the west side, and some commercial properties, a couple different road intersections. So we're looking at that very closely with city staff right now to confirm whether we should proceed with the east side versus the west side, and we will have that worked out shortly. But the master plan is written in a manner that provides lots of flexibility in both of these two instances so that as more information presents itself, we can make a, a very good decision. And again, the trail would be multi-user biking, walking, inline skating, generally 10 feet wide and be very similar to the construction along 76th that's currently going on. We'd have information signage and the combination of intercity regional trail and Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail, we think we, the park district has done, or will be doing, a very good job of providing adequate access to the regional facilities to the citizens of Richfield. And with that, I'll stand with questions.
And we had the study session. This is really exciting to be able to get over there and connect that finally together for Richfield to be a part of that. Other questions, please? Councilmember Rogie?
Yeah, not a question so much as a comment. I think it's going to be very important that you do cut across over to the Richfield Parkway rather than go around the liquor store up onto Cedar Avenue. It just doesn't make any sense to me to make a 90-degree turn on 66th Street. I mean, right now, there's nothing there. I mean, it would be a lot more scenic to cut in like your alternative there. So I would hope that becomes a high consideration.
That is a nicer route. Yeah, agreed. And city staff?
I had a question. And it's maybe not fair to ask you since you are not the east-west route, you're the north-south route.
I may be able to answer anyways.
Okay. And I was admiring your kiosks that you're proposing to put in somewhere along the pathway to help people figure out where all they can go once they're on your path.
Yep.
Will there be similar things on the east-west route?
Yeah. On Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail, we are working with staff to identify locations to do something very similar. One, it does show where you are in the whole regional trail system so you know if you live in Richfield or if you're biking and you're currently located in Richfield, you know how to get all the way up to Elm Creek Park Reserve in the city of Maple Grove. Two, it really just defines a sense of place and the identity that this is a regional trail versus a local trail, and that it's designed a little differently, it has different uses, and just resonates with people on a different level. And then there's also the directional post that has little blades saying some local destinations, you know, one mile to this park or a half mile to Cedar Commons. And we try to recognize some of the local destinations as well as the regional destinations. And we work with staff to identify where those should be located and what points of interest should be called out.
Okay, super. Thank you. That's for me so I don't get lost on the trails, guys. No, it is, really. I did have one question. We had another study session about bikes, again, our Bike Master Plan, which was really exciting. And we're also really excited because, you know, we're finishing one little piece down in the south part from 12th over to Cedar where it kind of dead ends. But we're really excited about that opening, and we're going to try to look at something with the Penn Open Streets concept in September. And I know we're going to have a big opening, and I know we're going to go down on that bike trail and everything. And I know that maybe all the legalese isn't done for Three Rivers, but boy, we'd sure like you to be there. And the reason is we'd like to give you the accolade you deserve for all you've done for Richfield. So I would invite you to try to be a part of that, whether our full disclosure documentation is all in place or not. Please participate and be a part of that.
I will certainly carry that message forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate what you do for us, too.